I'm so happy that you are all here. Please stand and join us in the class.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nourishing their dreams so they learn to continue, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to ask you to join me in a moment of silence as we remember Cynthia Brown, elementary teacher, assistant principal, Post Road Highlands, 1967 to 1994; Ms. Regina Culver, school office manager at Highlands, 1980 to 2004; Brandy Satt, teacher at George Washington Elementary School from 1988 to 2010; and Coach Brant Wintersing, physical education teacher, football coach, golf coach, wrestling coach, and track coach at White Plains High School, 1960 to 1990. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into announcements on the floor.
Yeah, I just, last Tuesday, in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, the White Plains Hospital had our very own mariachi band. And as you know, White Plains High School, I think, is still the only high school in New York State. It certainly was the first to have a mariachi band.
We say that.
Okay, cool. And they performed, and they were incredible. And I went and I watched, and the feedback was astounding.
Take this way. Thank you so much for sending it.
That's okay. I kept video. I was like a proud parent. The feedback was incredible, and it shows what our kids can do. It was just amazing, and I was, it was shaking out. I felt like I should be passing out cigars. But my thanks to Gary West and to everyone in our arts and music programs. It's amazing. This was a proud moment for schools. There was a young lady singing whose father's sitting back there, and she was not too bad. But anyway, it was wonderful. It was wonderful. Real proud.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll just quickly add, I think we've all been to a couple of football games. We've been out there in the stands or on the field and just really, I guess, happy for that sense of normalcy. The band is awesome. Cheerleading is awesome. Just that sense of, you know, something that kids can do to bring them their memories that we all have got to go. So that is good to see.
I'll mention a few things. I managed to get to online Zoom PTA meetings, NAS, PTA Council, middle school, high school, special ed coffee talk, all very well attended. I attended a few webinars on education policy impact of the pandemic, on families, education, health, youth policy, and economic recovery. Take Your Child to School Day, which was sponsored by, I guess, the New Bureau. Joe participated, Lester Young, the chancellor for New York State Board of Regents, Dr. David Perklin, his executive director of the NYU Metro Center. And then I also attended, I think some of the board members did as well, the Westchester County School Boards Association. They did a webinar clarifying culturally responsive framework and D E I, diversity, equity, inclusion implementation in the region. And a number of administrators from the Pittsville School District participated. Jay Werrona, who's the deputy executive director of the New York State School Boards Association, another person who's involved in communications, the NIAF Director of Unity. And I have to say, after attending these programs, that it makes me feel really good to be part of this school district, that I really feel like we've come a long, it's such a long way. And obviously, we always have work to do, but in terms of equity and social, emotional, and how we are working with our students and our staff, I really feel like we're in a very strong position here in White Plains.
Thank you. Do you have any?
Just two things. One, the homecoming. I just want to say thank you to the White Plains High School student government. They put on an awesome homecoming this weekend. The kids, my kids in elementary school were able to run across the field during halftime. It was really cool for them. But the games in the weekend was just really, really fun. And I want to apologize to Church Street Elementary School. I tweeted out, I was so excited about the Subaru brand today. It's public knowledge. It's not now. But apparently, it was going to be a surprise. I'm so sorry. But it's awesome. We'll hear more about it when we get to the, that item on the agenda. I feel off right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anything? Thank you. Next, we have two more announcements.
We sure do. We sure do. We have Lent here, and this, the math is going to represent both the WPTA and our friends at CSEA, I believe, right?
Yes, I am.
All right.
But we're all sending all the love.
We catch it.
Can you hear me? I can really use my teacher voice. I don't feel like this is on, but okay. So, good evening. As a liaison to the board for the WPTA and on behalf of us and the CSEA, I'd like to take this opportunity during School Board Recognition Week to thank Mrs. Lovich, Mrs. Brady, Dr. Stein, Mr. Letizia, Mr. Norris, Mrs. Eller, and Mr. Ricky for their commitment to our school community. The time you put in isn't always visible to all, but your commitment and dedication make a huge impact on the lives of the children that we collectively serve together. These continued efforts do not go unnoticed, and we are thankful for you all. I think I said this last year or maybe two years ago, but it still remains true that this work is not always easy, but it is always worth it. And if I didn't have this mask on, you would see I'm smiling. Thank you all very much from the WPTA as well as the CSEA.
Thank you, and we're smiling at the hour.
You can tell by the eyes.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Reagan Figueroa, who will be representing ASA this evening.
Good evening. On behalf of the ASA, we would like to recognize and thank you for the vital work you do on behalf of the students and families of White Plains. While your work, which is voluntary and very time-consuming, it is always challenging. But in the current climate, it's even more challenging and even more important. Members of the ASA are grateful for your advocacy, consistent leadership, commitment, and vision in serving all students. We are fortunate to have such a dedicated Board of Education that consistently supports all of the initiatives, activities, and celebrations in each individual school. Your contributions and presence are essential to our current and future successes. Without a doubt, our district is better because we have you leading our team. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reagan. Before I turn it over to Board of Education President Eller, I just, you know, Kane, Dr. Letizia, you shared this morning a 20-minute podcast from the Harvard Educational, the Harvard Ed School. And it was so interesting because it was really taking a look at Board of Education service all throughout the country. And it has been a strange time. Serving on boards of education has always been somewhat a thankless job, somewhat. But you've never seen that because you have spent your time with the kids. And I think that's been a hallmark of the White Plains City School District Board of Education is that you have been uniquely focused on our children. Sure, of course, supportive of our colleagues and certainly great stewards of the school district, in addition to our responsibility. But at the core, I think, of the success here is really the questions that are always asked is, how is this going to benefit our children? And how is this going to move our community forward? So, you know, just from somebody who has the pleasure of working so closely with you all the time, I just want to, on behalf of our team, certainly here at Ed House and our entire educational community, just thank you for your commitment to our kids today and tomorrow. We're grateful.
Thank you.
Well, I would just like to briefly say, on behalf of all of us, and certainly this is part of our life's work, for the greater good, that we do this. And in many ways, you know, whether it's evident or not, we're thankful to be in this role where we can help or we can make a difference and, you know, look back and say, I contributed. So it's really our pleasure to work with all of you, you know, in every capacity. You know, even if we don't agree, you know, the conversation is robust, and it's all for the single purpose of doing what's best for our students, staff, and community. So we thank you all for the opportunity to work with your children and to work with you as colleagues. Thank you so much.
This is a very special opportunity that we have here this evening. And we're joined with our commissioner of the White Plains Department of Public Safety and the White Plains Police Department, David Chong. Chief Castelli had planned to be here. Unfortunately, he had another engagement, but he sent his thanks and his appreciation. Our SRO, one of our SROs, the outstanding, and also White Plains City School District graduate Detective Christina Brown. When you become superintendent, one of the things you do is you go meet with a lot of people. And one of the first people that I met with was Commissioner Chong. We sat down. We talked for a long time. He has a very cool office. And as a history teacher and somebody who's just fascinated with history, a lot of really amazing stories that walk alongside an amazing career. You know, Commissioner, this is not his first rodeo. He's done a lot of things in his career in public safety and law enforcement. And, you know, what I wanted to do and what we wanted to do, and it is so important to us, is recognize the relationship, the positive relationship that we have with the White Plains Department of Public Safety. Because when we talk about our kids, there is nothing that's more important to any of us than to make sure that they return to us at the end of the day safe and sound, just like they left. And, you know, again, in a larger, comprehensive school district, there's a lot of moving parts. And what I can tell you is regardless of the moving parts, a constant presence of support has always been our police department. We are so grateful for that. And our police department, the relationship that we have is so special that they reach out to us before a kid in this town gets in trouble. Think about that. You live in a city with 56,000 people. And if a child on the weekend or something runs into a problem, our liaisons with our local law enforcement department will reach out to us to see, hey, how can we support this child before a problem starts? That's special. And that's a relationship that we want to continue and we will continue. And I can tell you, it's an envious position to be when you have those types of relationships in your community. And we're so grateful. And we wanted to recognize you, Commissioner, tonight. And I have... I don't want to put my fingerprints on it.
We're very careful. I'll have them forever.
City of White Plains, Department of Public Safety, exemplary partnership with the White Plains City School District under the extraordinary leadership of Commissioner David E. Chong. We thank you for your devotion, hard work. You were an important part of our community, presented at the White Plains Board of Education meeting October 18, 2021. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. Please, thank you. I'll tell you what, without Christina and without Anthony, I'll tell you, they're perfect as SROs. And I would tell you that I care very dearly about your children. I care about your children like they're my children. Okay? And I've been working with the superintendent from day one since he got here. One of his first meetings was with me, and we discussed security around the schools. We discussed intervention. We discussed students. We discussed activities. And we have a very, because of Christina and because of Anthony, we have a very good mentorship kind of program with the students. It's not a, you know, a combative relationship. And I've come from three different municipalities. And a lot of the municipalities, the couple of municipalities I come from, the students are afraid of the police officers. Our students are not. Our students trust Christina. They trust Anthony. They trust us. And I'll tell you what, together as a city and as a family, we're greater for that. Right? Halloween is coming up. I remind you Halloween is coming up. It's a nice, fun night. You'll have a lot of police officers on the street for Halloween. And just, you know, we're so blessed to be in such a great, great school district. And it's only grown. And I'll tell you what, to see these kids, and Christina said, you know, she's been in the job. And when she first came into the job as the SRO, they were freshmen. And now they're seniors. They're graduating. They're going on to colleges and everything else. I got to tell you, there's no greater pride for us, right? To see these kids going up. And we have no issues. I'm serious with you. We have no serious issues with these kids. We intercept the issues. We have no serious gang issues in the city. We have no serious issues with violence inside the schools or anything else. And if there's anything brewing, we're right on top of it. And we keep a very open mind because, again, we treat your children like our children. They are our children, and that is our responsibility. And so my pledge to you is it will continue to happen. Okay? Do not let this lady retire. It will continue to happen. We pledge our support to you, both on the police side and on the fire side. We've had a couple incidents, right? And our response was tremendous, tremendous response. And we always, you know, go with better safe than sorry, right? But we also don't want to frighten the kids. So, you know, we're always, you know, again, our main thing is to prevent things from happening and to get in there and intervene and make sure that these kids never have a blip on their mark as they apply for colleges and as they go on to greater education. So I can't thank you enough for this award. It's wonderful. It's going to go into the museum, my office. It's really good. And I do have your fingerprints. I have your DNA, actually. But again, thank you very much. And, you know, again, the working relationship I have with the superintendent is phenomenal. He's a great superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. He really is. Okay? And it's just phenomenal. So I thank you again, Christina. I thank you for the hard work that you do for us. Tell Anthony that I thank him. And again, if you need anything from your public safety department, we are your department. I work for you. Okay? Remember that. I work for you. So if you need anything, please, just reach out. All right? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
When we talk about working relationships, I can tell you, when I first met Christina, I met her mom, who probably told me everyone from my husband when she made it to me and actually knew me right away. But I will also tell you this, the attention to detail is remarkable. And I can speak to that firsthand. That when I interacted with Christina, when she said that I'm on it and I'll take care of it for a parent, it was taken care of. So that is something, you know, I don't know if you can get that every day, but we get that. So I just wanted to add that. Next, we'll move into public participation. The board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum limit of 25 minutes for their public participation contact. Please also respect the dignity and the privacy of any student or staff and know that our administration will be happy to entertain any questions you may have on a more personal nature. If you have anything to, any comments during public participation, please step to a microphone and please state your name and address for our board. Will there be any public participation? Okay.
Can you say it again?
Same way. So next, we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Superintendent Selfie, okay. Yeah, it's been, it's amazing. It's hard to believe that it's the 18th of October already, but it is, it's just fantastic. Every day is fantastic to be, coming closer and closer and closer to a more typical school scenario. We had our county meeting this morning with county executive ladder. And, you know, not news, celebration news, but really good news. In 11 days, we haven't lost anyone in Westchester County. 90% of the Westchester County population who are eligible have been vaccinated, at least one shot. That's incredible when you think about, you know, the efforts and the work that it takes to do all those things. There are so many people who have helped and have worked hard to get us to where we are today, and we just are so grateful. But before I go through my brief update and invite my colleagues to give an update to the Board of Education on a number of topics, I would like to recognize our White Plains High School liaisons who are here with us this evening. Sophia. Want to go up to the, yeah, go.
Hello and good evening. We are here as the student government. We are cosecretaries. My name is Solisa Donald and this is Sophia Emmer. We are here to, we reached out to all the schools in the area to give an update on activities and events going on each, and we are here and excited to share them. For Post Road Elementary, they had a Welcome Back picnic on September 24, and it was a great success. Everyone was happy to finally connect safely in person as a community. Post Road also started a Girls on the Run program, and we are all very proud. They have a team of 15 girls in third and fourth grade who are participating in this event. It's an eight-week program which inspires the girls to build their confidence and teaches them to understand themselves, value relationships and teamwork, and to have an impact on the world at large. There's a 5K in November, and they're going to run with teams all over Westchester. For Ridgeway Elementary, they were able to hold their Welcome Back picnic this past week. Families participated in games, our activities, and dancing with the DJ. They are organizing an upcoming National Unity Day in honor of anti-bullying this coming Wednesday, the 20th. Ridgeway community will wear orange and participate in various activities promoting kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. And for Rochambeau, we have, they had a successful 2021 to 2022 grand opening of Rochambeautique. Rochambeautique is a school store where students were able to redeem Rochambeau Rocks tickets that they receive for positive behaviors in exchange for cool prizes. Gifts on Fridays during lunch as well. The store is funded by Rochambeau's generous staff. And 20 kids took the opportunity to attend White Plains High School's pep rally that occurred this past Friday after school.
Good evening. Like Solis mentioned, my name's Sophia. Sorry, I'm kind of short. I'm not sure if you're going to see me over this. But for Church Street Elementary, which is my alma mater, they celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month by having the students share facts about their heritage. And during their morning announcements, they even were able to present presentations about their heritage. And they also have a Church Street School Garden where they have the students help get the vegetable beds ready for harvesting. And they're bringing that back. And all the proceeds also go to benefit a local charity, which is amazing. George Washington Elementary, they had the Manhattanville Professional Development School Partnership that they were able to restart this year. And they welcomed a new liaison, Valerie Palacios. And they also host two teachers along with six students completing their observation hours as part of their teacher studies. And then for Mamaroneck Avenue Elementary, they also had their back-to-school picnic with over 350 people in attendance. They said the energy was infectious and that everyone had an amazing time. And it was also their first in-person assembly for all grades. And they each participated in a drum ceremony which focused on teamwork and community. And then for White Plains High School, which is where we both go now, like Dr. Rick mentioned, we had our pep rally and we had our homecoming game, which we did win 27 to 7. That was during our spirit week where we had International Day, Pyjama Day, and also Pink Day, which was followed by our pink-themed pep rally for Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October. And we also have a few league champions as well for sports. We have our varsity football team that just won league as well as varsity soccer boys. And I'm not sure if we mentioned yet, but varsity volleyball, they're ranked number three on Lowhood.
15 and 0.
And I think 15 and 0. Yeah. And that's all we have for you today. But thank you guys so much for your time, and we are so excited to update you on our school.
That is so good. Thank you so much. Great. That update is fantastic. And this is a different, as the board goes, this is a little bit of a different K gun on the update. Typically, we would have updates primarily focusing on White Plains High School. But I love the direction in reaching out and coordinating with the other buildings. Thank you so much, ladies.
Dr. Rick, one question. They didn't mention, is it trunk or treat happening or?
Oh, yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
What day? We're doing it.
I think I have.
Is it on the, is it on Friday?
29th.
Are you going to dress up, Dr. Letizia?
I'm going to be scared.
We have a theme.
I'm going to be scared.
I'm not, I'm going to be not scary, but I'll be there.
Board of the Dead.
Thank you very much.
Board of the Dead.
I want to ask you a Board of the Dead question.
Lots, lots, lots of appreciate, lots to appreciate. We talked about Board of Education recognition, custodian appreciation day, principal appreciation, coaches appreciation. And I want to take this opportunity right now. Mr. Cameron, would you mind just coming up real quick and giving an update of we have an item on the agenda this evening related to the girls hockey consortium. And, but before that, just a little insight into Friday. Can you open here? Where are you comfortable with?
No, no, John's point.
Oh, wait, John's point. He's asking now. In a microphone.
I saw Michelle at the game on Friday. Kane, I didn't see you because there were about 2,500 people there. And Kane had mentioned that the elementary students ran out in the field at halftime. Prior to halftime, they ran out in the field too. With under a minute left, they ran out there. They didn't realize it was halftime yet. I was like, you know, about 190 over 100, thinking worst-case scenario. But it was, I would say, in the seven years I've been here, that was a Turkey Bowl crowd. That was, that was the best atmosphere we've had in seven years. Girls, you were there. I don't know if you would agree. Hopefully, you would. But the students were outstanding, the student section. Didn't even have to talk to them all night. Everything was positive. We had the five elementary schools there. The kids had a great time. Parents were there. So, and then, you know, icing on the cake as we won, as we won the game. So the football team is 4-0. They've already clinched the league championship. They have one more league game up at John Jay on Friday night. So if they win that, they'll be undefeated league champs for the second year in a row, not the COVID year, but prior to that. So back-to-back, boy soccer is back-to-back league champs as well. Volleyball is, I mean, they're 15 and 0. They've already clinched the league. They'll be the one seed. They have two league games left. They've already won the league. So it's been, it's been a great fall, you know? And not to, you know, just because field hockey's not winning the league, but Sophia's on the field hockey, and she's also an ice hockey player. So it's kind of ironic. Our girls tennis team had, you know, it came down in the last match. They played New Rochelle, got called for darkness. We had to bring back the kids the next day. We lost the last two matches, so we came in second place in the league. The girls swim team, Mr. Ricky knows, they're in the top league. So they swim. The girls swim team, Mr. Rika knows, they're, they're in the top league, so they swim against, you know, we're a singleton in swimming, so it's White Plains High School, but we swim against teams that are like four or five high schools merged. I know Michelle, I know swimming.
Right, and I have my compartment right, right here, we know swimming very well.
Yeah, so, so our swimmers are really like, our, our top-end swimmers are phenomenal and they train very hard. I'm trying to think of, of, I don't want to leave anybody out, the cross-country teams, both second place in the league. Our cheerleaders don't really compete in that sense for leagues, but they've been doing an outstanding job doing sideline stuff. Our field hockey, Sophia, we're probably second place in the league.
Second place, second place.
Second place, we have our last, we have our last home, last game, game tomorrow before the seating meeting. The girls soccer, boys soccer, their seating meetings, today they have playoff games this week and, so things are going well, things are going really well. And the kids, we have 540, 554 students participating in fall sports at the high school this fall. So things are going great and the kids have been excellent, just a lot of fun. It's great to, you know, there's, there's some issues going on with, with shortages of officials and bus driver shortages, but, you know, seeing the kids out there, it's great, it's great to see that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Sure.
Tonight on the agenda, exciting topic.
It is, it is, it's, it's, you know, it's interesting. So the girls ice hockey, there's a merger in Section 1. For, for Westchester County, we'll be involved pending, you know, the decision from the board. Congratulations on board appreciation. Well done. So the resolution goes like this. There's 19, 19 schools involved in the Westchester County merger. There, there's a little bit of unknown, the first year for the ice hockey merger was last year during the COVID year. So there, there was a ton of unknown and we didn't know what was going to happen, we didn't know what participation was going to look like. So what we've done as athletic directors across the section, Rockland County has a girls ice hockey team and Westchester were thinking it'll be two, it'll be two teams with the 19 schools, a northern and a southern Westchester team. And the girls ice hockey, you know, it's, it's different, right? Because the girls play on the clubs when they're younger with just girls and they come, up until last year, they come to the high school and they can participate on our 7, 8, 9 team or our, our 9 through 12 team with the varsity team, but the game changes as the kids get older, you know, the kids become stronger and bigger and faster, the girls don't do checking. So then when they come up to the high school, they're out on the ice and the game changes, there's, there's a couple of things that happen, you know, there's, there's a girl on the ice, so a boy comes and skates up and he holds up. But if he hits the girl, then there tends to be an issue, right? From the other team retaliation. So the girls now are going to have an opportunity to play with girls if they want. They can still play on the boys team, go through mixed competition, which is fine, but this, this merger will allow girls to play on just the girls team. And there'll be a regional championship, they'll, they'll, you know, we'll have to appoint a board, a coach, but it'll be for all the schools, so that'll come, you know, in time. But I think it's a, you know, it's a step definitely in the right direction and.
So we'll be keeping both the co-ed team and the girls team, not just the boys team?
So we have a 7, 8, 9 boys team and we have a varsity boys team. We'll keep that.
But it can be co-ed, girls can still play.
Girls can still do that, we'll follow the commission regulations through mixed competition, the girls can still do that. Or if the girls want to, they can play on the merged team with just girls.
That's great.
Yeah.
As a former high school and college ice hockey player? Yeah, this is good.
I guess he was the boys too.
Years in the game. This is great.
It has been, yeah, it has been. I think it's, it's a good time for it to happen. Because the girls are doing it, the girls are doing it as they're younger and then they're coming up and then their, their only option up until last year was, was to play with the boys.
Right.
And those locker rooms are terrible, right? Boys locker rooms are terrible. Stay away from those things.
Got to. Appreciate it. Sure. International Teachers Day was October 5th and, and we celebrated and recognized, of course, here in the district and really, you know, that was, that was a special day for us too. We had the opportunity to testify, to send, well, to really send, to send to the education committee and really speak about how the White Plains City School District was working as a community to support its children and looking for ways to ensure that we are going to and are investing the federal funds associated with the American Rescue Plan in a manner which will be, the return, which will be felt for years and years. And I think it was a novel, a novel approach from the HDC, a big, a big conversation with regard to the American Rescue Plan, but being able to extend throughout the entire school district was great. It was, it was an interesting experience, getting questioned by the senators was an interesting experience and, and certainly, you know, Ann and I were, were happy to be there and to have been able to participate. The district reopening work continues, we continue to meet with our reopening committee and all those meetings are posted online for, for our community to continue to follow along. The COVID-19 report as of work today is again, good news. We continue to see reduced numbers of students arriving at school with COVID-19, yes, we still have it, if it comes up from time to time. We have not fortunately experienced any widespread closures or disruptions. I hope, you know, for moms and dads and guardians, I hope at least the last couple of months have been a little bit more predictable than the previous September and October and hopefully that will continue to solidify us as we move into year. I know folks have been talking about the winter months as moving into winter, but I think based on what we're seeing and talking to medical professionals like Dr. Snapping, if people continue to follow the health safety practices even during the winter months, we can continue to have positive results with regard to COVID-19 vaccination and then reducing potential disruptions in case, which is great. There is a, a note that went out today that the two vaccination clinics that were scheduled to this week are going to be rescheduled. Again, going back to that, that figure in terms of the percentage of people who are already vaccinated, we didn't have a very good turnout. We are going to reschedule it to November. At that point in time, there may be additional opportunities perhaps even for booster and/or with the emergency authorization of 5 to 11, we'll have to see how that shakes out. But we will continue to offer that, those opportunities in our community moving forward. A budget plan is underway on Monday, we're going to be, we have our community budget input session on Monday evening. We're looking for that again, you know, discussion, discussions relates to student reentry, student reclamation, these are all ongoing and, you know, I just want to thank everybody in our community for participating in this work at the high school, discussing community events this evening in terms of parent guardian meetings where the team at the high school is discussing again, finding culture at the high school and ways that we can seriously support each other and our children as they emerge from 18, 19 months of, you know, very, very difficult time. And by the way, adults too. You know, so we're, we're all moving in this together. We're all in different places for sure, but our commitment remains to support our children and make sure that our academic environment is conducive to learning and that everyone feels safe and supported in our schools. Okay, I am going to now turn the microphone over to Dr. Debbie Pan, who is going to be giving us an update on curriculum instruction and learning goals. Thanks, Dr. Pan. And I'm going to put this safely down and you can control it yourself, so.
Okay, sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I thought that I had some exciting things to share, but everybody has so many things exciting to share, so much good news, so I'm happy about that. I just want to thank everybody for providing me with this opportunity to highlight some of the work that's being done in the area of curriculum instruction this evening. We're able to accomplish this level of work with the support of the Board of Education and the superintendent, so just thank you again. And I'll be using three overarching categories during this brief presentation, the first being inspire, innovate and create, second focus on student learning and the third would be commitment to continuous improvement. So the first inspire, innovate and create. The picture that you're looking at are third grade students that are engaged in a Project Lead the Way unit. The launch unit is stability in motion, forces and interactions. The students here are tasked with exploring, designing, sketching and building simple and compound machines that demonstrate the use of forces. In this picture, students are designing a model to side, to solve an opened, real-world problem. They are designing a model that can be used to rescue the White Plains tiger that's trapped in a deep moat surrounding the habitat where it lives. The models need to be able to safely carry the tiger to good, to safe ground. And this is just one example of the learning that is taking place through our Project Lead the Way launch program. So to inspire, innovate and create. A new highlight for this year is the Amazon Future Engineers Program. It is a three-year program sponsored by Amazon for K through 5 plus teachers. And I put the plus there because we actually have a sixth grade teacher who is participating in this program. It involves three years of professional learning for cohorts of teachers. The training is facilitated by BootUp, which is a nonprofit, an educational nonprofit that does professional development in computer science and focuses on the content and pedagogy of computer science. We have 29 teachers currently in this first cohort and they are learning how to use Scratch and Scratch Junior to code so that they can use these applications in the classroom with our students. The teachers will be designing interactive multimedia projects that can be integrated into various content areas. The STEM Ambassador's Program is also new this year. It's a smart start grant-funded program for teachers in grades K through 8. It's a partnership with Mercy College Center for STEM Education and five other neighboring districts in our region. We have 15 teachers in the first cohort and through 40 hours of professional development, 30 hours through Mercy College and 10 in district for teacher collaboration, the participating teachers will develop pedagogical skills in student-centered instruction with an emphasis on computer science, engineering and educational technology practices. Another cohort will join each year and participants are committed to helping with advancing this work district-wide. So although there are 15 students engaged every single year, this will expand to include other students through the work that they do when they bring it back into the district. We have expanded Project Lead the Way to include units in summer school at the elementary level. This summer, our kindergarten summer school students were engaged in an animals and algorithms unit. Students designed simple algorithms using Scratch Junior and implemented them using an iPad. They worked in small groups to design and program a digital animation about an animal in its habitat. They researched the animal and its habitat to inform the design of this digital animation. Grade 1 students were engaged in an animal adaptations unit where they were tasked with designing an ideal shoe for an extreme environment. Through investigations, students explored examples of adaptations for protection, camouflage, food and locomotion, and students combined all of their research and all of the knowledge that they gained in their reading of plant and animal adaptations with their understanding of the extreme environment to prepare their traveler and to design this ideal shoe. So it's all about engineering design and different iterations of product design and basing that on the research that you do. This type of problem-based learning results in an engaging and rigorous learning environment where students have hands-on ways in which they apply their learning and research to the problem at hand. It integrates subject areas and inspires students to be creative. We are planning to use Project Lead the Way units in our extended day program at the elementary level along with American Reading Company research units. Incubator EDU by Uncharted Learning is an exciting connection that we have made this year. We are currently participating in a shadowing year, meaning that we are working with Uncharted Learning and other schools across the nation who have already successfully established Incubator EDU courses at the high school level. The course will support students in developing a business model canvas, so think startup company. They'll gain market input on a minimal viable product design, continually test all elements of their business to make improvements as needed and pitch to investors. It will provide groups of students with a model of real market experiences and processes and processes that entrepreneurs use today. Our projected date for course implementation would be 2022 to 2023, but that is dependent on mentors and business involvement because it does take an awful lot to make a program like this, to get it up and running. So we're in the, in the, in the beginning stages of Incubator EDU. The next category that I will be addressing is focus on student learning. This photo is of an eighth grade earth science class modeling the expansion of the universe and collecting data. The intent is to ultimately conclude the abstract, to ultimately conclude the abstract concept that objects in space such as galaxies and et cetera are not expanding, but rather the space between them is expanding. This is just an example of focusing on student learning and making sure that we are creating learning experiences for our students that foster critical thinking, communication, collaboration and creativity. At the pre-K level, On My Way is a comprehensive curriculum that integrates ELA, math, science and social studies. We are also continuing with the pyramid model to support social emotional learning with our youngest learners. And we have expanded our providers to include the YWCA and we have, we have one class there this year and we also want to note, which is very important, that we have all of our seats filled and we are actually working off a short waiting list for our pre-K program. So that really shows that the strength and, and the, and the canvassing out there of our community, that they really do see this as a valuable asset. At the elementary level, we have implemented the Hagerty Phonemic Awareness Curriculum as a supplemental resource in grades K through 2. The need for intentional teaching and phonemic awareness is supported by the science of, the science of reading research and is also informed by our in-district data. When we were looking at our early childhood literacy data, we were seeing this as a need to intentionally target. So we'll be using the Hagerty resource. M-Class, which is an online assessment that replaces, but it's actually, doesn't replace, it's actually the upgrade for the Dibbles Assessment, that's something that we looked at last year because of the, the need to have something that was online. And the fact of the matter is that the resource is just a lot better because it gives our teachers immediate feedback and that immediate information on the data. So we'll be using M-Class in grades K through 4 and then the partner resource to that is Amplify Reading. And Amplify Reading kind of talks to, if you will, the M-Class assessment, so it actually gives children in a computer-adapted format skills that they need to work on based on the performance that they had on the M-Class assessment. That's pretty state-of-the-art and, and very, very beneficial to our students' learning. In addition, there is ongoing professional development in math in grades K through 5 focusing on computational fluency, conceptual understanding, reasoning, making sense and advancing the workshop model of instruction, which mirrors what we do in literacy. So our math workshop model will be the same, you know, obviously a little bit different based on the content, but the same instructional model of that workshop to have our children work together in small groups as well as under the direction of their teacher. At the middle school level, the TC units of writing have been implemented at grade 6, which provides a smooth transition for our students coming from the elementary experience because we're using that as a resource K through 5 at our elementary schools. It follows a workshop model, which we are moving toward at grade 6 and is an out, also of the writing committee recommendations from their curriculum review that they had conducted, I believe it's three years ago now. We upgraded the Big Ideas Math curriculum from the 2015 version to the 2022 version. Fall licenses were expired and they needed to be renewed, so we went with the updated version. The updated version is in both English and Spanish and includes a wealth of online resources for students and teachers. There are connections to real-life problems, there are QR codes that allow a student to scan the QR code and then bring up a tutorial, a thing we need for the concept that they're studying. And the curriculum is also aligned to the next generation learning standards. Science textbooks and resource, science textbook resources have been updated, including lab kits that complement the textbooks from across the middle school. And at Highlands, we are working toward avid demonstration school status, which is a national recognition of our avid, avid implementation and we anticipate that we will be receiving that recognition in spring of 2022.
Wow.
At the high school level, this is the first year of implementation of the Supa Forensics course. The new is in quotations there because the class was approved to be in our catalog for the 2020-21 school year, but it could not run because the training for the teachers was actually canceled because of the pandemic. So this is actually its first year of implementation. We have three sections. We have three sections of this college-level course at the high school, and it includes a rigorous lab component as the students are taking it for dual enrollment and they are earning that college credit by taking this course. So it's an advanced-level course for our students. Again, we have updated textbooks for science courses, including chemistry, living environment, advanced places, advanced placement courses, and electives. The Big Ideas Math resource in alignment with that vertical alignment with the middle school has been updated for the high school courses that use that as a resource. We have the addition of a .8 math lab at the high school for students taking algebra and geometry who are in need of additional support. And this is something that I know the coordinator of mathematics at the secondary level has wanted for a while. So we used, you know, some funding to make sure that we could bring that in, and we'll, we'll make sure that we evaluate that moving forward. We are in a pilot program for the SEAL of Civic Readiness, which is the SEAL that students would receive at graduation on their diplomas, at graduation. If requirements are met, and the requirements would include the coursework of social studies, so the sequence of classes that they took in social studies from middle school through high school, their performance on Regents exams, as well as any mini or capstone program, mini or capstone projects that we'll put in place at different course levels, and then, of course, community service experiences. So you're going to see throughout this presentation that kind of weave back in and out of like where we're going with curriculum review and how that's impacting this work. So this was really something that we discussed with curriculum review when we did the curriculum review, I believe, four years ago for social studies. And this was just in the beginning stages at the state level. They didn't have all the regulations, you know, planned out at that point. But they did offer last year, at the end of last year, they did a canvas of schools that wanted to be part of the pilot for this, and we luckily were accepted to the pilot. So we're really excited about that. We have American Sign Language at Rochambeau. That's the first year that we'll, this is the first year that we're implementing that. And the installation of a multimedia lab at Rochambeau for learning applications and video editing to create content-based multimedia presentations is in the planning and in the process. And I think some of the equipment is there, so we're working on that multimedia lab. And then we have a partnership with today's students, tomorrow's teachers, starting next year. And that is going to be so that we can support a cohort of up-and-coming students who want to become educators and make sure that we support them through middle school and high school and then beyond. So we're excited about that connection as well. Commitment to continuous improvement. This next photo shows our, this is actually new teacher orientation. It, it was in August, and here the new teachers are learning about some technology tools that are available to them to enhance their teaching and support student learning. And then this next picture shows our elementary summer school teachers learning from one of your colleagues about the Project Lead the Way units. And that, these are the units that they would be using in our summer school program. So professional learning is an integral component of our commitment to continuous improvement. And the other part of continuous improvement for us in curriculum instruction is curriculum review. So there've been a couple of areas where curriculum review have already started, and they are in advanced, in advanced years of the cycle. So in dual language, we are at year four of our, of our curriculum review cycle. And within that time, we have done many things. We have moved toward a more, you know, strengthened the fifty-fifty model that we have in dual language. We have bought resources in both English and Spanish to support in all subject areas, including online libraries for Spanish readers. But currently, what we'll be putting together under the curriculum coordinator, as well as the, the instructional coach, is a curriculum committee to examine core resources in reading and writing in both English and Spanish. So we'll be looking at what we're currently using and looking at what's, you know, best-practice resources are in the area of dual language and making a decision on, you know, where we want to move forward with, with a core resource. Dr. Jose Medina, who is nationally recognized, is facilitating professional development sessions on the C6 by Literacy Framework, which is basically a framework for dual-language programs. He's actually visiting this week and seeing K one and two, and then three, four, and five. I think three, four, and five in the morning, and K one, two in the afternoon. And that will be continuing in the year as well. And there is a focus on K through eight literacy, Spanish literacy, and that will be led by our dual-language instructional coach. And that is really of, you know, the scope and sequence of literacy skills that children need to know from kindergarten as they grow up through the dual-language program. The Writing Committee, this is three, this is the third year of the curriculum cycle. They have developed a multi-year professional learning plan in alignment with the recommendations that they made in that first year. You do have to remember that all of this has been happening during this pandemic time, too. So, you know, our years are the actual years of these curriculum review. And while we did try to advance the, the work from March 2020 until now, I mean, I really do feel like, you know, we're in a place now that we can move forward and we have a lot of momentum. The implement, implementation of book groups and study groups at the secondary level, and this is actually adult groups and study groups where they were studying text. One of them I know was cultivating genius, is something that we're actually looking at at the district level. Just really diving deep into the professional literature of where we need to be with writing, and then an intentional focus on writing across all subject areas. So, you know, there's a lot more going on there, but I just wanted to highlight those three areas. The social studies curriculum review that started four years ago with recommendations for us to improve and to strengthen our curriculum for social studies. We are in partnership with Generation Citizen. We actually had that last year, and that's going to continue this year. Generation Citizenship is a vendor that, well, an educational nonprofit, I also believe, that will come in and they will support us in developing civic education for our children. So how we can become advocates within our own community and put that as part of their coursework. And then also connections with facing history. We want to strengthen and, and grow those connections with facing history. The SEAL of Civic Readiness, I already explained how we're in the pilot program for that. And then also to work with the instructional coaches at the elementary level. And I can give you some examples of that, but I don't want to go into too much detail. But just, you know, like, for example, they had already, last year, they had gone to Bosie's Training for the Social Studies ELA Curriculum, and they also have a fourth-grade correct, connection with the Writing Revolution, which is teaching our children how to structurally write in social studies at the fourth-grade level. So those are two quick examples. Two other things that will be starting up this year, so this is in the first year of the curriculum cycle, is the Science of Reading, K through two. We'll be convening a committee to evaluate our current resources and how we are utilizing them to ensure that we are in alignment with the Science of Reading research. And of course, we're already doing that a bit with the data that we looked at and the Hagerty Phonemic Awareness Curriculum we brought in. So, you know, that, that work will be included in this curriculum review. And then to make district-wide recommendations to strengthen our practice in early literacy. For physical education, curriculum review, K through twelve. We're convening a committee to examine current curriculum and ensure that there is alignment with the New York State Physical Education Standards, develop curriculum to align with the standards as needed, and then to work with the New York State Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance to provide additional support throughout the review and alignment process. And then also in science, there are new science standards that have been released. We have time to build awareness and build capacity. They will be changing the testing for science. So to make sure that we're in alignment with all those changes, we will be convening a committee at both the elementary level and at the secondary level. The elementary level will be actually looking to adopt a new core resource in science, create a multi-year plan for professional learning, and study the New York State Science Learning Standards for implementation following the New York State timeline. And then work with Putnam Northern Westchester Bosie, a science consultant, for support through the process. And then the Science sixty-twelve will formalize their review committee and examine the effects of the science standards on current sequence of science courses at the middle school and high school levels, plan professional learning opportunities, which have already been done over the past few years, but continue to do that for content teachers to study and learn new standards and prepare for any changes to standardize assessments via professional learning and curriculum development. So there is a multi-year plan for that. Curriculum has a lot of pieces to it, so I just wanted everybody just to, you know, it's like when you think of how you teach children and what you teach children, a lot of work goes into that at many different levels. And I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank the curriculum coordinators, the Board of Education, the superintendent, all of our amazing teachers that just want to learn more and do better and do the right thing for our children. I think it's just a wonderful experience to be here and to actually be part of all this. And the instructional coaches, too, who, when you think of a district our size and teachers changing positions or changing grade levels, or new teachers coming in, you know, or, or a teacher going out on leave and a new, and a leave replacement coming in, like, all of those things need to be nurtured and supported. And I think we do that really well as a team. So I just want to thank everybody. So I feel like I went very, very quickly, but I am sorry because I thought I might get too detailed. So do you have any questions?
I just, is that it? You know, it's my, it's my fifteenth year sitting in this seat, I think, right? Fifteenth year? Okay. She's a mathematician, so she knows those things. I'm just a lawyer. Okay. What is really astounding and amazing to me is how I am continually reminded that, that teaching is an exquisite science, an exquisite profession. And as we learn more and as data comes, we're more data-driven, as we learn more about educating the whole child and how that, that's reflected in that very comprehensive presentation to Carol Lyons, all of your colleagues, everyone in ASA, to the, to the cabinet, to Matt, to Frank. This is an amazing operation, and we're trying our best to grow and to evolve. And that's what it takes. You can't remain stagnant. If you stay in place, as a surfer would say, you can either get in the water or you could ride the wave. And white planes are trying to ride the wave. And thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for putting kids on science early. As a scientist, I live for science. And when they realize that science is fun, as pre-K or kindergarten, they will be scientists forever. They will think about science forever, and they won't think about it as work because it's just, that's how their grade will work.
And that's also documented in research, right? If you don't catch them with science by the time that they're beginning middle school, you've missed that opportunity. If they've learned to love science in the elementary years, you'll have a much better opportunity for them to actually go into science as a career once they exit high school.
Debbie, I just want to say thank you for really overseeing all the initiatives. It's tremendous. And normally, I think that, you know, parents have sort of a snapshot of, you know, what their individual children are experiencing in the classroom, but not this, you know, sort of global sense of what we're doing in the school district and, and for the community as well. And so normally, you see the tip of the iceberg. And there is so much work that is beneath what you, what you see on the surface that's going on. So it's just a tremendous amount of work, tremendous number of initiatives that really continue to move the district forward and provide amazing opportunities for our students.
Yeah, can I just add? Any review of any program is time-consuming and labor-intensive. And the fact that we're in the middle of three or four different reviews while we're also creating electives like the Incubator EDU where the kids, this is like a Shark Tank-like semester-long program where the kids have to pitch it, and then they get funding and they create it. So, I mean, just the combination of reviews and the programs being implemented is just...
Yeah, we need, we need business and we need mentoring support for that program.
Okay.
We need to get that work out there as well. A lot of that work comes from the curriculum coordinators, right? So you wouldn't be able to do this local work without, without having, you know, content-specific people being able to drive that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie.
I have a question. Just a question. Where, um, our dual-language program, I know it started at GW. So what year was that? So where would those kids be at this point? Do we know?
They've graduated. They have graduated. I actually think, did they graduate last year?
No, no.
Two years ago.
The first cohort?
The first cohort.
Do we have, like, do we have any...
Yeah, so two years ago.
Do we have any data on where, I know, because we've expanded the program certainly to, what, two other, so three out of the five schools, right? So do we have any data on, like, the amount of kids that started in that program that stayed in it? And then maybe, like, did they all go to a college, any kind of college? Two-year career, whatever that big deal is. Do we have any data on...
We can, we can look into that data. I mean, we can just aggregate the data that we have of college graduate, of high school graduation and who's going off to four-year institutions, and we can take that out of dual language. They, they stay in dual language through the elementary years. It does change at the middle school level. They stay in content area, subject areas. When they get to the high school level, there are electives that they can take in Spanish and courses that they can take in Spanish. But then there are, like everything else that we can talk about at the high school level, there are some competing interests that they start to develop, right? If they want to take Project Lead the Way classes or if they want to take eight, certain AP classes, right? Because we don't run dual sections of everything in English and Spanish. So, you know, their, their experience gets them to a point and hopefully gets them to a point where they can then make really solid decisions for themselves of where they want to move forward. But we can take a look at that data.
And also, you mentioned that you were trying to do a Spanish library then for the, I guess, I'm assuming it's the elementary for, it's a dual-language program?
Yes.
So I do just, maybe I misunderstood, but I guess I'm looking at it as the point of the program is so that, you know, English-speaking kids learn Spanish, and Spanish-speaking kids learn English. Wouldn't we want, like, the English kids to really go for the Spanish library?
It's the same. It's for both. It's for both of them.
But I'm just, I guess my concern is that we would want to encourage them to go to the opposite language.
Yeah, so it's, it's dual language, so they're kind of, the fifty-fifty model is that half of their instruction or half of their materials at all given times throughout their entire experience are in English and in Spanish. So if you're a Spanish learner, you're, you're getting that Spanish, but you're also learning English, but it's additive for your native language as well. So it's developing your Spanish skills and developing your English skills while at the same time developing the skills of your new language. So everybody's like a new language learner.
Are all the three, I mean, I worked at GW for a while, so I've seen it a little bit. Are all three of the schools that are doing the dual language, are they all doing it the same? That it's on English?
Pretty much, yes. Yes. We're still, we're still working on upper grades. We have fifty-fifty models that might look a little bit different. But since we've been doing the curriculum review, we've been working on making sure that there's continuity across all the schools in, in, in not only their curriculum, but also in their instruction. So there might be nuanced differences, like an assessment might be different, right? So I think that two of our dual-language programs use the ERLA and Aneal Assessment, and one of the programs uses Fanta-Simpinell. And then, you know, so, so something like that, but you're still assessing children. You know, I mean, you're able to assess children. So that's not, it's not like a, you know, a complete difference.
I was just going to ask, like, it's still like a Monday, one, sorry, other day.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure that we, you could definitely...
I can, I can, I'll follow you. I don't know why I'm like...
That's okay. You're comfortable, that's good. I do have three more presentations.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Before we jump into transportation, I need to recognize our PTA for running another standing walk bike to school, which hopefully that day was a little bit easier for you, Sergio. So this is Buck, you know, Mr. Buck's here, and thanks to you and thanks to everyone. I think we had the, I think we had the best turnout, the largest this year.
Yeah, I think it was five, I think five.
Five, and we took like three or so, so it was great. It was really great. So thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you for helping us and the communities and the community for supporting us.
Okay, back to school report for White Plains City School District Transportation. Dr. Kara Teich and Sergio Alpaca? No, I'm kidding. Sergio, Sergio...
He was ready.
But Sergio, I do want to thank you for not only being here, but also for constantly working to improve our service. Transportation is a subject that's every single day to start again brand-new. So no matter like how great yesterday was, tomorrow, it always, you know, re-trafficked jam that backs up. And it's a funny thing, right? You know, the first day of school, by the way, the first day of school, my son's bus would not show up.
That old.
So it happens to all of us. And, you know, it's, it's frustrating, but over the next couple of weeks, of course, it works out. You know, and, and anything can slow a bus. And the most important, of course, is that the kids are safe all the time. But... And the most important thing, of course, is that the kids are safe all the time. Lots of preparation went into getting us ready for this academic year. And Sergio, did you want to, do you want to comment on this topic or would you like you to go through, so however you work on it?
I'm hoping I will do.
I do appreciate that. So again, a big operation, right? So we have a lot of routes, but we were able to, you know, we have, we have to next where possible. Sergio has become, and he's been really masterful at trying to accommodate parents and guardians and our kids as best as we possibly can. We did turn-by-turn, so, you know, we went out on the road and, and practiced the routes. Now, of course, somebody who's watching this from home right now is like, how could that even be possible? My driver didn't know what to stop and that could have been substitute driver. As you know, one of the other things we're contending with, right, is the driver shortage. We've been fortunate with National Express and we're grateful for, for that. But at the same time, you know, there are always driver substitutes and so on and so forth. Every single call and every single email that we get is responded. And that's really important. It's a different type of a model. We've sort of changed how we address calls and we're hitting them and making sure that we're getting back to people. If not, the same day, Sergio, real great about this, within 24 hours and making any adjustments. Weekly meetings with the contractor, after, you know, to pad to Anne, making sure that we're holding everyone accountable, that everybody's accountable to our kids and we're focusing on customer service. National Express did a lot again to, to be prepared for this, this academic year and I'm happy to say that right now in the eighth of October, we're in a pretty solid position, you know, after coming through some...
And Anne was brilliant in keeping our contact with them for last year when we were not using so much. But we did not have the same problems as so many other districts have had where they did not have drivers because their, their districts did not keep the contracts. So this was really important.
Yeah, we had over 100 routes that we were able to open the door with drivers that were covering those routes.
It was a brilliant decision.
Thank you all for supporting. Lots to obviously contend with, you know, everything from dismissal processes to staggering the buses, you know, becoming familiar with all of our children, using the Z-Pass, is getting a counting of the number of children, the ridership, so-called ridership, the number of children riding the bus any day. So, you know, being able to put more buses on when, when we need to, to, to address the number of children, changes in bus stops, safety concerns, making sure that the Durham Bus Tracker is, is up and running and that when a parent looks at the tracker, it doesn't show them like, you know, driving off into Ryanbeck. I got a call from somebody in Upstate New York, right, who was in Oracle, right? They were in Upstate New York somewhere. They were, they were complaining because it showed all the buses down here like planes or something like that. And again, you know, the driver shortage stuff never look, now we have, we've done recruitment, so you've had new drivers, technically a training. Training's not an overnight thing. This is a, this is, this is, you know, and you want it to be, right? A complex, high-level training process because you want the folks who are responsible for transporting the children to be well-trained. I have to say just again publicly, Sergio, thank you. And I know moms and dads and kids thank you too, you know, a lot of behind-the-scenes work. But one of the things that I'm always impressed with is when there's an issue, Sergio is out of here and right to the spot. So whether it be a corner, whether it be a fender bender, whether it be checking in at a stop with a mom who's worried about, you know, the five-year-old, the first child to get on the bus, he's there and we really do appreciate it. Thank you for watching. Also, thank you for letting me do the presentation.
A bunch of clicker.
This is great. You know, I was over at the high school today and, you know, just kind of talking to the kids about the new furniture that we have in the hallways. What do you think? And of course, you know, there are these, all those sitting up furniture. So if you don't know, we have high tops now for the kids to be able to sit at. We actually have couches and like these school coffee style or coffee house stuff. Is that a thing or what? You know, bench seating for the kids to sit on, all of course stylized in the White Plains City's polisher colors, staying on brand. And, you know, it has been a tremendous, tremendously positive transition and I want to, I want to thank Don Ginn for helping move us and helping look for new ways that we can provide and increase our service to our children while also making sure that we're increasing our service altogether. Of course, during the pandemic last year, service dropped off. And, you know, when we had hybrid learning, we had all this new service, we really dropped off. We are back up again. Anne, we're, we're, this is 80,000 in just the summer, right?
That was just the summer program, but our numbers for September are going to be very strong. And we're going to be continuing to get better at finding...
Yeah, that's great. And, and, you know, when you look at, look at the summer program in total, just the amount of work and the amount of, of different entities that are served through our food service department. These folks on our team are amazing. I love popping into the kitchens and just saying hello, but I also just want to draw attention, much like transportation, these folks never stopped serving, literally never stopped serving our kids. Since March 2020, we've always found ways and food service found ways to continue to support the community. So we're really proud of that and we're really proud of that. Thank you. Big, big changes when we opened up this year, grab and go in classroom district-wide for all of our kids. I talked to, I did it morning, I was at GW and SLEs, you know, our kids really taking it. Oh, yeah, they're taking it. So that's really fantastic. Of course, all meals are, are, children have access now to all meals without having to pay and not get so much. I have to tell you something. There is no such thing as a free lunch. That's true. That is true. We are paying for our children to eat lunch every day at school as American citizens. And I'm really proud of that. I'm really proud of that. I know, I know our Board of Education is really proud of that too. There should be no question that every single child in the United States of America who's out of public school during the course of the day should be able to eat without having to worry about scraping together $3.75 or $2.00 to deal with. I think we can figure that out as a country. I'm glad we're doing it now and I hope we continue to do it. The meal options have improved and we're always looking for new ways to, to expand. We are looking at things like vegetarian dishes, looking at dietary needs to the extent that we're able. We are trying to work within the confines, of course, of the requirements of the program, but also to try and be a better point of service for our kids. Asking the kids what they like. What do they want more of? What do they want, what do they want to see more included? We are seeing again 20% increase, right? That's great. At the high school, we've introduced kiosks that increase the efficiency of the point-of-sale for our kids, so, you know, those kinds of things. So I mentioned the furniture in senior lounge. I'll have to set some pictures up. Well, there have been some, really, since... Again, you know, challenge is always, right? Staffing is always a challenge, but we're constantly continuing to look whenever needed, supply chain. I learned, I didn't know this, the Tyson Chicken Nuggets, I'm sorry, I forgot them. My daughter Harper, you know, probably could have told me that months ago because she's a bullshit kitty eating those chicken nuggets. Jello, you know, they all have all these types of... Holidays. Now, this, this, of course, is something that we have to watch, just, just in terms of being able to, to provide continuity in the orders, right? And again, another science, the backend science that I knew nothing about, like, went a little bit, right? COVID-related related things, you know, it slows everything down. Necessarily it does, of course, but it does. It slows everything down. So you think about, you know, when you have these layered mitigation in place, it just takes a little bit more time and that, of course, is a challenge when you're in a regimented tool. Questions on food service?
Joe, can I just say that, you know, here's another example, sort of tip of the iceberg where, you know, families, communities, they sort of, you know, they see, you know, the meals their kids get or whatever, but in fact, the, the board and the district were very proactive in having a review of the food service program and opportunities arose and change of administration of the program as well. So, you know, that's led to all these wonderful improvements.
Really great point, yeah. And, and more to come. That's, that's the exciting thing, you know, by working with the kids and getting more feedback and getting more input, being able to continue to improve that program. Finally, on the agenda this evening. Last but not least, Dave, and I know you have to drive, you have to drive us to the island.
We're still on number three, right?
Yeah.
The traffic should clear up.
Sure. I don't care about the traffic. Hey, Dave, thank you so much for being here.
Oh, thank you. No, I don't care about driving. It's more following all those presentations now. Going to apologize for the next five to 10 minutes that you guys are going to sit through.
You're going to explain.
No, yeah, we'll try. Again, thank you very much for having me this evening. I just wanted to be able to make a brief presentation to the board, just to kind of walk through the financial statements. My firm did meet with the Audit and Finance Committee and went through them in, in greater detail than I will, obviously, this evening, but as I'm here, I'd love to answer any questions or comments anyone has on, on the audit, on the, on the report or anything that you have. So again, thank you. My name's Dave Tellier. I'm a partner with Noraki Smith and we wanted to thank the White Plains School District for, again, selecting us to be the auditors, the external auditors for the district. We value this relationship with the district and, and we truly do feel that it's a, it's a two-way street. We, we get just as much out of it as I feel that we give to the district. So thank you again. Just to go through the, our, our services, what we actually performed, we did perform the audit of the general purpose financial statements for the year end of June 30th, 2021. We also performed the single audit of the federal award programs administered by the district throughout the fiscal year, as well as the audit of the extraclassroom activity funds. We issued our letter, management letter, presenting any findings or recommendations that we had and following up on previous ones. And we did assist the district this year in implementing a new accounting pronouncement. This year, there was a, a new governmental accounting standards board statement, which was GASB statement number 84, which related to fiduciary activities. When this initially came out, we didn't think it was going to be that big of a deal and it ended up being a very big deal for school districts in a sense that it did change the way in which we were accounting for a lot of different things. Previously, in the fiduciary funds of the district, the district, as, as every other district here in New York, was processing payroll through its fiduciary funds or trust and agency funds. It accounted for its extraclassroom activity funds, student activity funds and our scholarship funds, all within the trust and agency accounts. Now, through the, the new wisdom that GASB put out there as far as what defines a fiduciary activity, they did not meet the criteria anymore. So what we had to do was now pull them out of those, those account fund structures and, and move them into either the general fund or create a whole nother separate governmental fund to account for them. So it was a lot of work on the district's efforts to, to go through, again, changing account structures, procedures, codes and all that other stuff. It was, it was definitely cumbersome and it will continue to be until they kind of get it all up and running and get used to it. But, but again, it was something that we were unanticipated as far as the impact to it until it really came to us and reached out. But as always, White Plains kind of steps up to the task and runs through it and gets it done effectively and efficiently and as quick as possible. So, so again, they have great efforts there. Before I just summarize some of the key points on the actual report, I think, as always every year, I like to take, you know, the, the two minutes I have here to really give kudos to the business office. I, I think, and I'm sure they get a lot of recognition throughout the year, but again, from my vantage point and what I see, it is a well-run business office led by Anne with Marcy and everybody else that, that, you know, has their hands in the various aspects of the accounting functions, just is so efficient and runs very well. And if there is something that comes up, they are the first to jump on it and get it fixed or find a better way to do it. It's truly, like I said, it's a great relationship that we have because a lot of things that we see that we, that we come across here, we bring that to other, you know, other districts that we, that we partner with and we work with because it does work so well. And, and looking at the numbers aspect of it, a district this size to be, have its books and records closed within 45 days, ready for audit with minimal to no adjustments is really just, it's, it's a feat. It really is. And as, as everybody knows from, from what I'm standing up here, the district has to file their report with the state comptroller and the education department by October 15th, which I think is unfair to begin with, because that's a tough timeline. But again, I'm in the field working on the, the books and records by the beginning to mid-August and their year, your year-end is June 30th. So to have all that ready to go for us to go through and audit and then for us to be able to get through the financial statements, get the New York State annual update, you know, the ST3 form that has to be filed every year, you know, is just, again, great effort, tremendous effort. And, and again, I'd like to really applaud them for, for everything that they do, so. So just a couple of quick highlights that I'd love to share with you as far as the financial statements go. Again, our audit reports throughout the, the financial statements for the, for the main financial statements, as well as the single audit of the federal award programs, were all clean or unmodified opinions. Everything is presented in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. We, we had no issues, no problems. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies found in our review of the internal controls, as well as the policies and procedures of the business office. The district during the fiscal year, June 30th, 2021, was within all allowable limits attested to the New York State tax cap, as well as all the fund balance limitations that are set out for, for the district for the year. I think the district operated on a positive basis as far as controlling expenditures in this time. You know, it was, it's very hard to build a revenue budget and still kind of come on task with revenue and then have all the expenditures, but dealing with the pandemic and, and all the various aspects that you had, Anne and her staff, working with management and all the department heads controlling costs is just one of the many positives to move forward into the next fiscal year here with the district. Just because I have to, I'll throw a couple of numbers at you. The district continues to invest in, in the facilities. At the end of the year, you had capital assets net of all depreciation charges totaling about $162 million. So that's all your buildings, building improvements, equipment throughout cafeteria equipment, you know, and couches colored in... The district continues to reduce its total outstanding bonds and, and energy performance contracts and things of that nature. So your bond principal payments for the year totaled $6.4 million, bringing you to a total outstanding obligation of a little over $58 million. So that number continues to come down year over year with the principal payments being made. And the district did pay down its energy performance contract, about $845,000 to about a total of $4.4 million. So again, that debt is, is whittling down year over year until, again, you go out for, you know, future obligations. The district in the current year did have a transfer from the capital reserve that resides in the general fund of $10 million to fund various district-wide improvements that it has ongoing and that money was moved into the capital projects fund to facilitate those projects on an ongoing basis. Again, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. We had no compliance findings or questioned costs in our review of the federal, the federal awards. Again, that's an audit that's not only financial-driven, but it's compliance-driven, so we have to examine those on a much greater scale to make sure that the district is complying with all the various requirements, as, as well as the financing and the funding and such. Everything was found to be in order as we anticipated it to be. We had no current year recommendations or suggestions for, for the current year as far as our review of the procedures, the policies, everything that kind of surrounds the business office, as well as the federal programs. And I'm happy to say as well, all prior recommendations have all been fully implemented. So moving forward, this is as clean as a report as you can go from my end as far as recommendations and, and things to improve upon. So again, we'll continue to work with the district, we'll continue to examine and if things come to our attention, we will make sure we bring them to, bring them to the district's attention, but as far as we can, in our review, we're very happy with the way everything is, is operating and how everything's been put together. So that's really it. You know, it was a quick one. Again, I apologize.
Yeah, just a couple of comments and a question. I, you know, these are always things you want to hear, so we wanted to thank everyone for everything that they did and thank you for really scrutinizing everything in front of the reality. Thank you so much and congratulations. Thank you so much and congratulations. This is news that we wanted to hear.
And a big thank you to the office, you know, Marcy Moskowitz and Lindsay Rose and Anthony and Randy. They really worked hard to try to accomplish everything, especially in light of GASB and all that we were dealing with the pandemic. So, you know, I give them a big thank you for helping.
Definitely deserved, yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
I conclude my super presentation.
That's okay. That's okay. So next we're going to move into our summary of action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Oh, yes. I'd like to draw your attention to, I have a bee for donations and thank ExpressStar Brad to propose $10,000 that has broke into, you know, like, paying enthusiasts and Subaru White Plains and the adopted classroom program at Church Street School. This is really tremendous and a huge thank you to Subaru. And $1,500 from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools for a mural project at Merrick Avenue School. A trumpet from Valeria Werner for the music program, a trumpet from Ron Weinstein, the music program. A viola from Maria Usan Dibares for the music program. And a violin from Diego Romero for Post World School. And trumpet from the Di Bernardo family for the music program. And $360.43 from the Substitute Teachers Association for the Jupurino School. Thank you all for your donations.
Every week, every month, when you see all the donations, I'm particularly reminded of a community that really supports the action in many ways. So this is a thank you to all of you that you've done for us. All in favor?
Aye.
Next we're going to move to individual action items. May I have a motion for the agenda to be agenda?
So moved.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So it will be A through E. First, we have the recommended approval of the special education district plan that's 2031 through 2074. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Or in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I just say, just rereading it this weekend, the fact that we're providing those ICOP classes for middle school, for every subject, I mean, for most of our core subjects, right? Math, so science or studies in the LA is just phenomenal. And then we follow them up to the high school and provide it in the regions classes as well. And just a really well-done.
Classes that culminate in a region.
Culminate in a region.
A mandatory region, congratulations.
Yeah, no, the whole report was just actually.
Yeah, it was.
Yes.
It was, well, I, it was well laid out. I'm sure. There's your assurance.
We did. It was good, we can do it twice.
We can take turns.
Next, we have the recommended approval of a settlement of employee 46, 15. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? On favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of a settlement of employee 15, 33. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions? On favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of a section 1 merger with other districts for girls, varsity, ice hockey, names. May I have a motion?
Second.
Questions? May I tell us everything?
You did.
Maybe we should know. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we'll move to item B, our addition to the agenda. We have the recommended approval of a temporary appointment of Michael Eaton at the preschool, middle school Highlands campus, effective October 19th, 2021, through June 30th, 2022, or soon. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Eaton, congratulations and I thank you again. And certainly thank you to the entire team at Highlands. Difficult time indeed, and I know you're working very collaboratively closely still with Mr. Spatafor as well as the rest of the team. We really do appreciate you stepping up, stepping in and continuing to move the mission forward at Highlands.
Thank you, yeah.
It starts tomorrow, by the way.
And thank you on behalf of all of us, we are wonderful as well. We have, I got the record, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And Madam Chair, if I could just state, I certainly wish Mr. Eaton well, but I need to abstain on that item. So I just wanted the record to reflect that I needed to abstain.
Thank you, thank you. Next we'll move on to the discussion. We have our two proposed policies, which the policy committee has had opportunity to look at and conduct them in tonight, the first meeting. Next, we can go to our board committee report.
Finance, you just heard, Anne was in the meeting. So Anne, we have a meeting next Tuesday, the 25th.
Any other, you know, work you want? We have a very comprehensive report from Dr. Han, thank you, too, for that.
And of course, it'll include me, so I won't, I won't go into the detail of all that Richard Dillon came and about the seal of civic readiness and the prom came and presented actually about the Abbott program. And again, we're very proud and anticipating Highlands being a national demonstration.
Do we have any more?
Special. Yeah, special. Special Ed Med. We had a wonderful presentation by Miss Arabardin. We reviewed the district plan for special education, which is reviewed every three years. And we've noted that we have a much more robust ICT, integrated co-teaching system. Rochambeau and the elementary schools are now fully integrated with ICT. We have many fewer self-contained classrooms and most of those children have been moved to integrated settings. We talked about the science of reading, which we already heard someone speak about tonight. Program development, we're expanding ICT at GW from K, for K1. And in secondary, we heard from, we heard about the instructional coach there, who is supporting ICT, inclusive practices and equity. They're working on differentiation of teaching for students. They're piloting a reading program at the middle school and integrated support programs to access classes where children meet as groups and they're able to come into those classrooms during the day as needed, but they are integrated into general the gen ed population. So all in all, oh, and Andrus is now.
Seven.
In seven of our nine school buildings. And we are looking more into educational and restorative discipline. We're working with the Morningside Agency and there'll be more information available as more work is done in that area. But there's no longer the punishment stigma of discipline and we're hoping that discipline now becomes a much more restorative practice for our students.
And Deb Abart. Deb Abart spoke at our last meeting about circle, distorted circles and circle practices. So that's being implemented as well. And also school climate and culture survey with St. Louis.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks. I think we've always called it out. Thank you. There's one of us reported out. Thank you so much. Before we adjourn, John, again, we thank you for all you do to make this meeting available to the public. Whether you realize it or not, it's part of the work of being transparent and equitable so that everyone is aware of what happens when I'm here. So just to let you know that we do appreciate what you do. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.